No one volunteers for this and not show up.
I don't suppose.
True.
I'm sorry.
Ow, okay. Got it. Look pretty.
The February 9th, 2015 meeting of the City of Danville Planning Commission is now called Water. Welcome everyone here to the meeting today. The Planning Commission is an advisory board to the Danville City Council and is comprised of members who serve on a voluntary basis. Today we have eight items to consider for which there will be a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on these cases may do so at that time. After the public hearing, commissioning members may have questions for staff or for those who spoke in favor or against a request to change. The Planning Commission will review this case relative to the city code and make a recommendation before the city council, and council will consider these items at their March 17th meeting. And we also want to welcome, we have a new commissioner that's joined us today, Mr. Harold Garrison, welcome aboard. So if we could have the roll call, please.
Mr. Scares.
Present.
Mr. Dotson.
Present.
Mr. Garrison.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Present.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Bolton.
Here.
Okay, first item on the agenda today is a rezoning application, PLRZ 201500016, filed by Kahilikin Khan, Faces of Our Children Incorporated. The applicant is proposing to consolidate parcels into one tract. If we could have the staff report.
Request has been filed by Khalil Khan, Faces of Our Children Incorporated, to amend the year 2020 land use plan from MR, PSA, and SSR to NC. Parcel IDs number 04532, 00318, 58395, and 58169, and to rezone from SR Suburban Residential to NC Neighborhood Commercial, parcel IDs 58395 and 58169, otherwise known as grid 1816 Block 9, Parcels 19 and 19.001. The applicant is proposing to consolidate the parcels into one large parcel. A copy of the proposed consolidation plat has been attached to this report and also sent out to the surrounding property owners. Properties are required to share the same zone and classification in order to be consolidated per city code. The lots being requested are currently vacant, wooded, and topographically challenged lots. They are also bisected with both 100 and 50-foot City of Danville power line easement. The easements make parcel 58395 almost impossible for development of a single-family home. Issues for anything other than parking lot would be difficult. While no plans have been presented, staff has discussed expansion of the office building at 505 Arnett Boulevard and the need to replace parking lost if such an expansion would occur. Thirty-two notices were sent to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. A full report has been handed to you. It's also available on the podium if anyone in the audience has questions. Staff recommends approval of rezoning application, PLRZ 201500016, filed by Khalil Khan, Faces of Our Children Incorporated, to amend the year 2020 land use plan from MR, PSA, and SSR to NC on parcels IDs 04532, 00318, 58395, and 58169, and to rezone from SR Suburban Residential to NC Neighborhood Commercial, parcel ID number 58395 and 58169, otherwise known as grid 1816 Block 9, Parcels 19 and 19.001. This request will allow for the consolidation of the properties as well as for possible expansion of the facility at 505 Arnett Boulevard. Due to the topography of the lots as well as the substantial amount of land lost to the various power line easements, the construction of a single-family home would be impractical.
All right, thank you. This time I'll open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak on this item on the agenda, come forth, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Khalil Khan. I represent the Faces of Our Children, which is located at 505 Arnett Boulevard. We've been there for a few years now, and all we do is just to help with the process of sickle cell disease. It's a nonprofit organization. We take people there, we have them, and we send them to the right appropriate place like Roanoke and things like that. It comes upon us that a tree parcel of land is adjacent to it, which is of no value, which we decided to buy and which we bought for the sole purpose of enhancing the neighborhood. All we're going to do, we're not going to change any environment, we're not going to do anything. All we're going to do, clean it, clear it, all the trees, everything going to be left the same way. We take the shrubs off and we make it some grass there, seats for people to sit. Ask me any question.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners? Don't have any?
I just want, the lot that fronts on Third Avenue West, is that, is that originally in Starmont? I guess that's really more for staff. Was that part of the Starmont subdivision at one time, or is it?
If it was part of Starmont, I don't have a map that shows it. It's already zoned Neighborhood Commercial. The only two they're asking to rezone are the two that are actually on Third Avenue West, those first two lots, the one with the power line easement and that small little sliver that's at the corner. The reason we have it all highlighted is because they're asking to change the land use plan for all four of them, so it was highlighted as part of the land use plan change. It's not a rezoning for that portion.
Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item on the agenda? Okay, see you none. I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move recommend approval of rezoning application, PLRZ 201500016, that's submitted.
Valseca?
I'll second.
Valseca. If we could have a roll, please.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. All the remaining items on the agenda are related to the Stewart Street project, which we've been working on for quite a while, and I'll take them in maybe like three sections because of the way they're divided up. So the next one on the agenda is a rezoning application, and it's followed by a special use permit. We'll have to vote on them individually, but we can have, I guess, public hearing on them?
Yeah, combined public hearing, we'll need to vote on it.
Okay. Do you, do you want to do a combined public hearing on the whole thing?
I would do a rezoning special permit.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, for the first, item number two on the agenda is rezoning application, PLRZ 201500019, filed by Keith Walden, on behalf of CWC Holdings, requesting to rezone from OTR, Old Town Residential, to AR, Attached Residential, certain vacant lots on the west side of Stewart Street. The applicant is proposing to rezone the above mentioned properties to AR, Attached Residential, in preparation for consolidation and construction of attached single-family dwellings. And along with that would be special use permit application, PLSUP 201500020, filed by Keith Walden, on behalf of CWC Holdings, requesting a special use permit to allow for a waiver to the minimum district size. The district size proposed is approximately 2.56 acres when five is required. If we could have a staff report.
The subject property consists of parcels 20596, 20597, 25672, 22841, 24958, 25085, 25226, 22099, 25069, and a portion of 25070, approximately 2.56 acres in zoned OTR, Old Town Residential. The applicant Keith Walden is requesting to rezone to AR, Attached Residential, in preparation for consolidation and construction of attached and single-family dwellings. The subject properties are currently vacant, and the applicant is also applying for special use permit for a waiver to the minimum district size to allow for proposed district size of approximately 2.56 acres when five is required. Preliminary site plan has been submitted showing 10 attached, single-family dwelling units. It also shows the closure of Stewart Street at the end of the land CWC development owns, so that only ingress and egress would be from West Main Street. Preliminary site plan is substantially in compliance with the zoning code. Planning Commission approved Mr. Walden's original rezoning and special use permits on November 10th, 2014. Concerns were made by the city council by neighboring property owners in the December 16th, 2014 meeting in regards to increased traffic due to the closing of the street and the placement of the multifamily apartment building. City council sent the items back to Planning Commission for a work session to help resolve some of the neighboring property owner concerns, and proposed that a traffic count be completed by staff. Planning Commission met on January 12th, 2015, in an open comment work session. During the work session, Mr. Walden presented a new site plan showing the apartment building being relocated from the northwest corner of the development to the southwest corner. Neighboring property owners were still concerned that the building would be directly behind the properties, and suggestions were made to move the building to the east side of the development adjacent to Central Boulevard, or to place the apartment at the southernmost part of the development directly behind the proposed cul-de-sac. The applicant mentioned that placing the apartments on the east side of the development would not be cost-effective due to proximity of Stewart Street, the amount of work, and the money it would be take to relocate the street and utilities underneath. Staff also presented the results of the traffic count along Stewart Street that showed minimal traffic, didn't raise any immediate concerns if the streets were to be closed off. Seventy-six notices were sent to surrounding property owners within 300 feet. The report has been presented to you, and a copy is also available on the podium. After receiving the comments and feedback during the Planning Commission work session, Mr. Walden has now presented a new site plan showing the location of the apartment building being located in the southernmost part of the development directly behind the cul-de-sac, with the attached residential dwellings on the west and the single-family dwellings to the east. Staff finds the proposed preliminary site plan has addressed the immediate concerns of the neighborhood properties and is substantially in compliance with the zoning code. Staff also believes that the traffic concerns have been alleviated through the traffic count completed that showed an average of 128 cars along Stewart Street daily. Staff has addressed in previous meetings the need for the city has for different housing types, including higher density and mixed residential uses. Staff believes that the proposed development will meet these needs and will also help increase the economic value to the city. Staff also believes that creating a smaller district size and rezone to attached residential will still be in keeping with character of the surrounding vicinity, so staff recommends approval of the applications, PLZ 2015019 and PLSUP 2015020. Staff is recommending approval of special use permit application, PLSUP 2015020, subject to condition that no more than 10 units of attached, single-family be developed on the west side of Stewart Street.
All right, thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing now and ask if there's any comments to be made on this item. You may come forth.
Good afternoon, my name is Keith Walden. I'm representing CWC on Stewart Street. I think this is our third or fourth time being here, so I think everybody has a picture of the plat showing what we want to do. I can describe it again, or I can go through the questions, or go through some other items I wanted to bring up if we need to.
In condition of 10 units, attached, single-family, any problems with that? I mean, you're okay? That's, I noticed, I noticed staff conditioned the special use permit on this particular one with the attached, single-family to 10.
Right.
That's okay?
Yeah.
Did you have anything else you wanted to present in addition, or you just want to wait and see if there's any questions?
Well, if there's any, if there's any opposition, you know, the one thing I want to bring up is the survey the city paid for, paid a company from Northern Virginia to come and do, and I've got that report here. I'd be glad to read some of it, which says that Stewart Street is right in the, in the middle of where we need housing in the City of Danville, Virginia. And I'd be glad to read that if I need to, or I could wait and see if the opposition wants to hear it, or whatever you think I should do, I guess.
Well, you've had it before, so if you wanted to wait to see if we need to, if you want to reemphasize.
Okay, okay, I'll do that.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
We have a new picture there. Is there any way that we could just kind of, I know we've got it in our packet, but, because we moved placement, Keith, of the apartment building, I think it might be good to kind of point that out.
Yeah, what we've done is the, if we're going to start out here, which we're opposing neighbors on this location, we moved it down to where this pond is. We're opposition on that, so we moved it around here, which is as far, basically as far away from anybody as we can get it. So we're trying to accommodate the neighborhood. So that's, I think that's about all we can do on that part.
All right, okay.
How big is that pond going to be?
You know, this pond is a, is a retention pond, and it's, I mean, as far as acreage or exact size, I do not know that. This is all based on the engineering that will have to be done for, for the environment, which is, which is controlled by the federal government. So it's, I really don't know the exact size. It is what it is, basically. And we're required to do that by the federal government.
Okay.
I have a question. Did you bring pictures this time of proposed things that you were looking at for housing?
No, I did not. You know, what I want to bring up on that, if we don't do this, I know everybody says, you know, it's just your word, it's your word as far as what you're doing, but, but if I don't do this, I can come back in there and put the same thing that was there before I tore it down, without anybody's approval, so.
And I realize that. We just asked for pictures.
But I don't have pictures because, because pictures, you know, I've been fighting this battle. Pictures cost about $20,000, and I don't want to spend the money for the pictures without the approval. It's, you know, and it's, nobody wants to take my word for it. I've been in business here for 30 years. I've got a reputable company, and I'm, I'm not just some guy from out of town that's come here to do this. I've been here for a long time, and hopefully people will take my word that I'm going to do a nice project, and that's kind of where it all. But yes, it's going to be a nice luxury apartment, nice housing, and that's.
I think as it goes, all we, all we're dealing with, again, is zoning, and I think once that that's done, as he said, you know, plans will be drawn, and they'll be approved by the city, style and all that, all that will be done, but it's premature to go through the cost.
It's a little premature for that part. We're trying to do the zoning, but, but I can assure you it's going to be a nice neighborhood, no question.
Any other questions for him while he's up there? Okay. If you want to take a seat, we'll see if there's anybody else wishing to speak. How it works, just like that, it's about.
Good afternoon.
Howdy.
I'm Melanie Vaughn. My husband Kevin and I live at 235 West Main Street. We called Keith, and he was very willing to meet with us, and came to our house, and spent quite a bit of time talking about the change that he was going to make in the plan, which is reflected here. We, we believe that he's sincere in his plans to do something upscale, nice, something that would enhance the neighborhood. Of course, the details of that need to be in writing, which they would be at some point. I guess the way we feel is if the, if the rezoning and cul-de-sac are inevitable, this is the best plan we could have. We've been told that the units cannot go along Central Boulevard, that that just logistically won't work, so it's really up to you to decide. It's the rezoning and the cul-de-sac, the plan is lovely, you know, we don't object to that. We also read the housing study and saw Charles Bukie's presentation, and this is a pri, one of the priority areas, River District through Avery to DCC. This is, will be one of the first new developments within the city, you know, discounting the warehouse area where they took existing buildings. This is brand-new construction, and probably the first in, within the city limits in a long time. We've lived here for nine and a half years. It's certainly the first we're aware of. But in thinking of that housing study, and the direction it, it is pointing, this development could be a very positive thing. It's really up to, you know, the zoning is out of our hands, the cul-de-sac is out of our hands, the development, I believe, we believe, will be very attractive. One other thing I wanted to mention is from the traffic study that the city did, we had been told that it was determined a traffic light would not be needed at the corner of West Main and Stewart. We suggested perhaps stop signs would be a good alternative. We have been advised that those is not a good alternative at all, so we are recanting that suggestion. Otherwise, that's, I have nothing else to say. I don't know if anybody has a question, but thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Shelby Clark. I live at 227 Montague. My backyard is almost directly behind the parking lot. I've had my objections to this since I got my letter in the mail, the first letter. I do want to talk about that because the mailouts have been brought up several times. When we, when the 18 people, was it 18? No, I'm sorry, it was 18 versus 16. It was 16 for and 18 opposed. Out of those 16 for, six of those people do not even live on our street. It is property that is owned, that is rental property. So you've got 10 people that were actually for it, and two of those houses are on Marshall Terrace. So the people that are directly affected by this in their backyards, and you're seeing us here, because this is not something I want to wake up to every morning and have to view out of my backyard. While I think the pond is a great thing, I don't know if it's necessarily legally has to be there. Is there some other water distribution that you can do other than having to have a pond? I mean, I don't know what he's, I don't understand what he's talking about. Can I ask that question? I don't, I don't understand what the pond is actually for.
The Commonwealth of Virginia has requirements for stormwater quality as well as quantity. Okay, the regulations changed in July of last year on how stormwater was handled. It used to just basically go straight into drainage systems and disappear into the river. They've changed the rules progressively, and now you have to deal with not only the quantity, how much water comes off and how fast it comes off, but also the quality of it. So you usually have to hold the water, let it, any dirt or anything else, oils, whatever's trapped in that from the first rain, settle out, so the water that goes into the streams and into the system is cleaner and also cooler. One of the ways to deal with that is the creation of a pond. There are other ways to deal with that. So the pond may or may not be, depending on what the engineering comes up with. It's a conceptual idea here, shown on this diagram, but there may be other ways to deal with that. We haven't got that far alone because that design work is quite expensive to figure out whether a pond is necessary, or whether you can channel it through piping or some other means. There are different ways to deal with it, and I guess the developer would have to answer further, you know, how far along he is. A pond is not necessarily a requirement, but you're seeing more of them. If anyone's familiar with the gas station that was just built up on Mount Cross Road, kind of across from Sam's, I think Murphy Express.
Yes.
There's that pond out in front of it. Now, if you also notice the, the Zaxby's Restaurant and Sleepy's, they don't have one, but if you've looked over the hill behind Target, you'll see two large ponds below that. They go into that system which goes into the pond behind the Target Building down over that hill. That water's filtered out before it enters the stream. It's, it's a way that a lot of people are going to do it, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to have to occur here. They put it in as conceptually, but it may or may not be there.
I mean, is this something that we eventually have a say in, or once this is done, multifamily, the developer gets to do that behind the scenes with building permits and?
They'll, they'll work with the city and also the state on that. Will neighbors be involved in the pond? No, they will not, just because it goes to the state, and that's where the engineering comes in. The engineers have to send it off, the state has to approve it, and, well, locality has to approve it along with the state. And again, there are different means to do it, so I don't want to say that it's going to be a pond. It may or may not be. Neighborhood concerns are something that, that we take into account, but it's a way that, really, the state's kind of forcing people to go to. Like I said, the Murphy Express, you can clearly see that they've put a pond in, and that's, that's a way that, it also provides wetlands and other things, so sometimes it's a benefit for the environment, and that's why they want, they're kind of steering you that way, but.
Well, when you talk about a runoff of oils and things like that, it makes me wonder, you know, are we going to have fish that's going to eat the mosquito population? Are we going to have an excess of, you know, snake population running through our backyards? It's already a very wet area, and you've all heard our issues with our water in the backyards through that section. It already stays wet. We already have, you know, varmint issues, so to speak, with the water. I mean, if this is something that is not going to add to it, I could definitely say, you know, go for it, but if it's something that's going to, you know, make more of what we already have and contribute more to the water issues that we have, it could be done a better way. I, I mean, I would just like to say that I am very much against it. I feel like it's a safety hazard. We have a lot of children in our neighborhood. You know, it's either that, or it's going to have a huge fence around it and be an eyesore. So I'm, I'm not really too keen on the pond. I'm just going to tell you guys that.
Let me say something before you.
Well, and I'm saying that because I know this all has to go along with multifamily, and, and that's where I'm getting ready to go, and I just got the pond thing thrown at me, so I wasn't, you know, clear on how that worked into the neighborhood actually having a voice on how this gets developed.
Right now, there's no plan in place on Stewart Street, and that's why you've got a problem. This will, this, this, this right here is being built and should alleviate the problem because it's going to collect the runoff of water. That's the purpose of it.
Yeah, and, and that is, like I said, my huge concern, but it is up higher, it's up on a higher level of the street where everything runs down. It's up further than where we are. So I feel like it could cause more issues for us in our backyard.
It should be less issues. That's the whole reason for that.
Okay, all right, well.
The water that runs off right now is, is basically in control. It goes straight through and just.
It's in my backyard.
Right. This will have to control that water. So if anything, they're designed to slow the flow of water down, to control it. Now, the mosquitoes and other things, I can't say yet because this is new state regulations, and we're trying to see how that works ourselves. But as for the, the amount of water and everything else that's flowing in there, this will control and slow the amount that's coming in there. So it should lessen that. And the city built one on Orchard Drive, if you're familiar with, Nordand Shopping Center across the street from it, is a large kind of detention basin that the city built because we were having flooding issues further down. That has been very effective in slowing the amount of water that comes down through those streets behind it. Now, we haven't had, as far as I know, any complaints about mosquitoes or other things in that, that basin, but I can't guarantee it. I'm not going to say that you're not going to have that because, you know, anything will breed in water, but usually deep-water mosquitoes don't go in there. They're more small standing ponds.
Well, I didn't mean to sidetrack too far, but I just wanted, I mean, I think it's great to add to the green space. It's just, you know, we've already had major water issues. The other concern that I have is the, the cul-de-sac where it is in Keith's original plans, the, the second cul-de-sac is still there. That concerns me with someone being given multifamily housing on certain lots and being given the go-ahead, and then this plan changing. And it's just going to move further down the street and in my backyard. My, I want to voice my opinion on that because I've done a lot of my own research. I'm not in real estate. I do own two homes, and while I had the conversation with Ken about property value and whether this project would, you know, affect the value of my home, definitely not by increasing it or by decreasing it, but it, it's not so much that it's a comp from my house, but it is a marketing, a negative marketing value for my home. These apartments creep down any more at all. I have an apartment building to the left of my home, and I will have apartment buildings directly behind my home, which will impede on the sale of my home if I ever want or need to sell it. And I feel like if there's a way to take these last few lots and not do anything with them, and just see how the beginning of the project goes, I mean, I know he said this is a, all one, and we're going to do it all in one shot, or we're not going to do it at all. I own my home and I pay taxes, and I just do not want to see my property value be unmarked, my, my property be unmarketable because I have a three-story apartment building in my backyard, because originally we started out with five, and we only have two in the picture. But he still owns some of this other property, and the cul-de-sac is still there. So tho, those are my concerns, and I really want to see this project go. I would like to see the parking lot moved out from behind my house for privacy reasons and noise. We are in single-family homes. We are in a neighborhood. And in essence, you know, when we had, we were looking at five buildings, I was considering this an apartment complex, because that's what it is. I don't care how nice you make them, 60 units. because that's what it is. I don't care how nice you make them. Sixty units is an apartment complex. So now we're down to two, and if it stays that way, if, if I'm understanding this correctly, you know, I'm for it as long as I can get that parking lot out from behind my house. But we've been here three times now, and I would like to see this come to an end as well. And, you know, development get put back there and not have to come back in here and see you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
My name is Gus Fire. I, I was concerned also about mosquitoes when I was told I had a retention pond in my project. Brian Donovan, who is, controls those things here at City Hall, informs me that mosquitoes do not breed in water that's more than six inches deep because there are then other organisms in the water that eats the mosquito larvae. So that's why you have problems with old tires and things like that that hold a little bit of water. But anything deeper than that, mosquitoes are not a problem. And I've not had any problems. My retention pond's been in for the last six or seven years, and I haven't had any problems with them.
That's, that's good to know.
And also, on the apartments, you know, there's a pro offer because the, the size of the, the multifamily lot was increased from 1.5 acres, which restricts the number of units based on the, the, the size of the lot. In other words, you can only put sixteen units per acre, so 1.5 would be restricted to twenty-four units. This lot, it actually is 2.7 acres, but it's not going to be sixty units on 2.7 acres. The pro offers have already been issued where, or he's, Mr. Walden's already made the pro offers, where there will only be twenty-four units. The reason for the fact that it's, it needs to be 2.7 is because of the topography issues. This area here where they originally proposed is very relatively flat, and so there wasn't much concern about elevation changes and things like that. Whereas with the lot down at the end, there probably is going to be elevation issues, and so there's probably going to be a lot of wasted space that's going to be lying in slopes and things like that, so... But this is the same twenty-four units that was proposed in the original plan. There, there is an increase of two units on the townhouses. There is a decrease in the number of single-family houses from ten to nine. But if you will recall in the last proposal, there were four lots at the end of the cul-de-sac that we're not, we were not requesting for rezoning. And so those lots have now been absorbed by the apartment buildings. So the, the net, there, there isn't a net gain. There's actually a net loss of three units on the project.
Thank you. Any, did y'all have any questions for him?
No.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? None? I'll close the public here. Any questions from the commissioners or...?
I have a question for staff. Westmoreland is pretty much a cul-de-sac, has apartments and single-family houses. True for us.
True.
Okay. Lady Astor, where I live, pretty much a cul-de-sac. There is one exit on the side, but you've got apartments. Both of those have stop signs. Mrs. Clark said something about, she was told, or that we shouldn't have a stop sign at Stewart? They're just going to come flying out of there?
No, there will be stops on at Stewart. The question was, could we have a stop sign at West Main and Stewart to alleviate? And we, we cannot install the stop sign on West Main Street. It wouldn't meet the thresholds for a stop sign. You also have other issues with cars and the noise and other things. So a stop sign on West Main Street at that point is not, not feasible and would actually create more issues than it would resolve. Stewart Street itself, yes, we will have some sort of traffic control coming out. They won't just have a free rein to shoot up Stewart into it.
Has there been any evidence on Westmoreland or Lady Astor that because of apartment locations on those streets, that the value of the single-family homes go down?
I haven't done the research, but not that I'm aware of. I haven't back, went back in and tried to pull when they were constructed, what the values were at that point versus what current values are. But to the best of my knowledge, that's a desirable neighborhood for people to live in. And, I mean, we've got realtors here on the board who could probably speak to this better than I could, but I'm unaware that that negatively impacts values.
And one more last question. When Keith, Mr. Walden, started coming, and there was a lot of opposition, there were many people that opposed the project when it went to city council over the months. Do you have any idea how many people have been turned in favor of this, that were opposed originally, that are now, when notices are sent out, are not sending back opposed messages?
Again, I did not run the numbers on the past opposition. I know today, the number of letters is substantially down from what we had. I think we're down to... You have the numbers in front of you. I'm sorry. I gave you my copies.
There's seven. It says seven were opposed, twelve were not opposed.
Okay, so we're down to nineteen responses.
Seventy-six total notices were sent.
Yes. That number is substantially lower than what it's been the other times that we've sent letters out.
Okay.
Also, you can just see by the, the folks who are here, the numbers. The Vons were not substantially in opposition to it, but very vocal and... I'd say the work session, I think, was, was effective. It seems to have addressed.
Dumont was opposed originally, or had, was he here or was it just questions?
He was, initially, he had checked off the oppose box, then he came for questions. Now, actually, he sent one back that said he's in favor of it. I didn't put in favor on his comments because, but he is in favor of the request.
Any other questions from the commissioners? If not, we could entertain a motion. Still got more to go through. Yes, Mr. Bolton? Sure.
I would move, we recommend approval of rezoning application PLRZ 2015-0000019 as submitted.
We have a second?
Second.
Second, and you can call the roll, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Dodson?
Yes.
Okay, and now the accompanying special use permit application that goes with it. We have a motion on that, Mr. Bolton?
Recommend approval of special use permit application PLSUP 2015-0000020, subject to conditions per staff.
Okay, we have a second?
Second here.
Second, and a roll call, please.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a rezoning application PLRZ 2015-0000021, filed by Keith Walton on behalf of CWC Holdings, requesting to rezone from OTR Old Town Residential to AR. The applicant is proposing to rezone the above-mentioned properties to AR, the attached residential, in preparation for consolidation and construction of detached, single-family dwellings. And along with that, we have two special, special use permit applications. One is PLSUP 2015-0000022, filed by Keith Walton on behalf of CWC Holdings, requesting a special use permit to allow for detached, single-family dwellings respective, this is on the east side of Stewart Street. And then special use permit application PLSUP 2015-0000023, filed by Keith Walton on behalf of CWC Holdings, requesting a special use permit to allow a waiver for the minimum district size. The district size is proposed as 1.6 acres when five is requested, required, excuse me. So we have a staff report on that.
Subject property parcels 25089, 25090, 25086, 20418, 25087, 20424, 25088, and a portion of 24359 and 21117 are approximately 1.6 acres in a zoned OTR Old Town Residential. The applicant Keith Walton is requesting to rezone from OTR Old Town Residential to AR Attached Residential to consolidate and construct single-family dwellings. Subject properties are currently vacant. The applicant is also applying for a special use permit for a waiver to the minimum district size to allow for the proposed district size of approximately 1.6 acres when five is required, and a special use permit to allow for detached, single-family dwellings. Preliminary site plan has been submitted showing nine, single-family houses. Preliminary site plan is substantially in compliance with the zoning code. Seventy-six notices were sent to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. The copies of the responses have been presented to you, and they were also on the podium, but somebody's got them all. Staff recommends approval based on the information presented in the previous staff report for rezoning application 21 and to rezone from OTR Old Town Residential to AR Attached Residential, special use permit PLSUP 2015-22 to allow for detached, single-family dwellings in accordance with Article 3F, Section C, Item 16 in the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia 1986, as amended, and special use permit PLSUP 2015-23 to allow for a waiver to the minimum district size in accordance with Article 3G, Section C, Item 22 in the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia 1986, as amended. Staff is recommending that conditions be added to special use permit application PLSUP 2015-22 and special use permit application PLSUP 23 that no more than nine, single-family detached dwellings be constructed on the east side of Stewart Street.
Alrighty. Thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing. Any other comments? Same thing going on, just different tracts of land is all we're doing, dealing with. Any other comments, questions? Close the public hearing. Okay, we need some motions. Commissioners? Mr. Bolton?
I move, recommend approval of rezoning application PLRZ 2015-0000021 as submitted.
Second.
Is that the way you want it? As submitted is with the...
The rezoning application as submitted.
Right, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. We can have a roll call, please.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes. And we have two special use permits. If we can get those, go ahead.
Go ahead, somebody.
Recommend approval of special use permit application PLSUP 2015-0000022, subject to conditions by staff.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, you can call the roll, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll do the next one. Recommend approval of special use permit, permit application PLSUP 2015-0000023, with conditions per staff.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Second. And we got a roll, please?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Okay, next item is rezoning application PLRZ 2015-0000024, filed by Keith Walton on behalf of CWC Holdings, requesting to amend the year 2020 land use plan from U.S.R. Urban, Single Family Residential to M.R., Multi-Family Residential, and to rezone from OTR Old Town Residential to M.R., Multi-Family Residential, vacant lots on the west side of Stewart Street. The applicant is proposing to rezone the above-mentioned properties to M.R., Multi-Family Residential in preparation for consolidation and construction of 24 units. And along with that will be special use permit application PLSUP 2015-0000025, filed by Keith Walton on behalf of CWC Holdings, requesting a special use permit to allow for a waiver of the minimum district, district size. Certain lots, vacant lots on the east side of Stewart Street, and the district size proposed is approximately 2.87 when five is required. We can have a staff report.
The subject property consists of parcels 23886, 25703, 25542, 20422, 20421, 20420, 24358, 24649, 22513, 22103, and portions of 22104, 22, 21117, 25074, 25070, and 24359 are approximately 2.87 acres in a zoned OTR Old Town Residential. The applicant Keith Walton is requesting to rezone to M.R., Multi-Family Residential in preparation for consolidation and construction of 24, multifamily units. The subject properties are currently vacant. The applicant is also applying for special use permit for a waiver to the minimum district size to allow for proposed district approximately 2.87 acres when five acres is required. Preliminary site plan has been submitted showing four buildings, showing two buildings, excuse me, with six, with 12 units each. It shows a closure of Stewart Street at the end, and CWC owns, so the only ingress and egress would be from West Main Street. Preliminary site plan is substantially in compliance with the zoning code. Seventy-six notices were sent to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. A report has been attached to it. Staff recommends approval based on the information presented in the previous staff report for rezoning application PLZ 2015-24 and special use permit application PLZ SUP 2025. Staff recommends approval of special use permit PLSUP 2015-2025, excuse me, just 25, subject to the conditions that no more than 24, multifamily units be constructed. Too many zeros in there too quick.
I know. It's a bunch of them there. Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Any comments or questions on this? Being on our close of public here, and any questions?
Can I ask a couple of questions on this one? You made, just, just for clarity's sake, you made a switch when you were reading from four with six units and...
It's no longer four buildings. That was a typo. It's two buildings at the end of the street now. It's no longer four buildings.
Okay, so...
Four buildings was from the previous staff report where we had the multi-units.
Right, I understand.
It's been moved around, and I did not cut in...
I just want to draw attention to it enough to make absolutely clear. I, I think one of the things in order to make sure that we are honoring the neighbors and even the concerns of the neighbors, not everybody's still totally convinced about this, but it's that we are talking two units in that placement at the end of the street with that kind of configuration.
Correct. That was, that was staff's, in getting all these reports together, we just cut and paste the wrong sections.
I understand. That's, that's okay. That's part, I think, what our job is, to make sure that's cleared up so people will understand. So what we're approving here is exactly as that drawing presents it.
Yes, and you could add that condition to the special use permit, that it is two buildings and 12 units apiece, so...
Okay. And Mr. Walden is okay and understands that. We're all okay with that. That drawing is what we're talking about, okay?
Correct.
The, I, I have just a little procedural question, and then other than that, I'll be quiet. The, um, what, what happens next? Okay, you know, this goes, the zoning approval's going, then, then they go ahead and develop the plan. What happens next in terms of us? Is there another step in here?
There, the next step would be from this body to city council for the rezoning, special use permit, the actual granting. At that point, then, Mr. Walden would hire the engineer and start the preliminary engineering work. Then he would bring back the subdivision plat, which will actually create the various lots for the detached, the attached, as well as the lot for the multifamily, and also the dedication for the street right-of-way. That plat would come back to you. You would have to approve the major subdivision plat, allowing for those various lots to be created in that location and the acceptance of the right-of-way to create that street and create the cul-de-sac, so you will get to see this again.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question about the apartment buildings. Mr. Walden, did you explore putting the parking lot in behind the apartment buildings?
I'm sure there may be some possibility of putting it behind the building. If we did, we could put the building out closer to the, you know, closer to the West Main and put the park behind it as opposed to in front of it.
I know previously, I think there was an issue about topography, and I didn't know if, it was... I just didn't know if you had explored it before this, between last meeting and this meeting.
No, I really didn't. The public can be done. The building just can be moved, same with Fort Ly, as in Fort Ly, you know, building issue. I saw.
So we're not approving exactly where the apartment buildings?
Not yet. That'll come when the subdivision plat comes.
Okay.
And if, if the parking, if the building shifted forward, the parking goes around back, then you've got that concern with the, the stormwater. That runoff's got to get collected somewhere. You've got to make sure that that can get into an area that is able to be held for that, that stormwater quality and quantity. So you're going to see more, you know, parking lot shifted uphill, basically, to allow for gravity to feed that water down. It's something that the engineers are going to have to play around with.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Clark. Down the bottom, down the bottom, Lady Astor. Doesn't your mother live there?
Yes, she does.
Are those two apartment buildings with 12 units each?
I think there are 10 units each, because she is an apartment.
Actually, I have the version of all seven of those. It's my condo.
Two 12 units?
Two 12.
That's right, that's right.
Has Mr. Walden seen those? Is, is there any possible chance that, that his two might look something like those two?
By my exposure, I've been down there. Mine's going to be a little different than that. They're elevators, they have elevators. They are, they are only one and a half to me, and they are, to be perfectly honest with you. They are believed, so we might think they're a little bit of a...
Oh, yeah. They've been there thirty, forty years, haven't they? Oh yeah, they've been there thirty, forty years, haven't they?
They've been there, I mean, seventy-two hours.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? A motion, please.
Uh, recommend approval of rezoning application, PLRZ 2015-0000024 as submitted.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Who, who's second? Somebody, okay, staff's second. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
And now the special use permit.
Okay, it's me. Uh, recommend approval, uh, of special use permit application, PLSUP 2015-0000025, I believe with conditions per staff.
Okay.
Um, did you wanna, you had the question about the two buildings?
Okay.
So you can add that condition and not call staff.
Okay, all right, but let's do that.
It'll be, it'll be conditions with staff and presented as on the drawing or the map would be fine.
With, thank you. With presented as on the drawing submitted by Mr. Walden.
Well, to be more precise, what you might want to say is two buildings each containing twelve apartments for no more than a total of twenty-four apartments.
Yeah, that. Quote that.
What he said.
What, what he said.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Two seconds. Good discussion.
Clarification for the attorney. Two, two buildings with twelve units each or just two buildings with a total of twenty-four? The reason being is we do have topographical considerations, so there is a potential that one building may need to be higher. I, I don't know and this is some of the things we'll have to work on. I just, I didn't want to limit you and say twelve units, cause you could have one building that has eight and another one that has, you know, more, sixteen, so I don't, I don't want to mess, I'm trying not to, to hem and, too much, but I still want the totals.
Total of twenty-four.
All right, two, two for a total of twenty-four.
Okay. And the second, and this?
Your desire is for no more than two buildings or at least two buildings?
No more.
What we're, what we're agreeing to, what, what I understand, that my motion, my recommendation, is what you have presented to us here. In other words, in other words, we're going to get to review this again. If we come back with three buildings, that's going to be met with some difficulty. So in other words, we understand that there'll be some variances here. We understand that this isn't, you know, that we're doing zoning, but, but the basic idea, since we've gone through so much and trust of neighbors and things like that is a key issue here, that, you know, I think that's what we're agreeing to is basically as it's being presented to us with the understanding that?
You gotta come to the mic, we can't hear you.
Come on, step up to the mic, cause we're all off, they can't hear you.
If I can make an editorial comment, that the mass of, you know, it's gonna be twenty-four units, they're probably gonna be around twelve-hundred square foot, uh, uh, a piece and so that, that's a certain square footage. And actually aesthetically, it might be more pleasing if that is broken down into smaller increments than if they were all massed into, into one or two buildings. And so I just want to make sure you're not talking yourself into something that you don't really want.
Well, I just think, I just think, I just think, given all this stuff, because we think, in my opinion is when we go through this process, we're not just going through it for this project, we're also going through it for future projects of other people that are going to have to figure out how this works and, and, and so, so we're setting some precedent here for development. We hope we have more development like this, but we want to get some of this kind of cleared up. We can only, I think we, it's very important for us to place these buildings and things like that and have some confidence where we're going. Now, you all are gonna have to come back again with more details on this, so I, I think?
Well, the only, the only comment I would make on, on, on your request is that, um, because the, the plans and not, things have not been finalized, that there's a very strong possibility that it, the project would be more attractive if in fact it was not required to be all massed into one or two buildings. Um, as Mr. Walden pointed out, he wanted to make sure that it didn't look like a Hampton End then at the end of Stewart Street.
Let me ask you this, if, say that's the case.
Right.
You could still make all that fit on that piece of land that we're dealing with?
Right, what this, what this basically is, this is a conceptualized drawing, um, that showed that in fact you could get twenty-four units on this piece of property. We don't want to come through here and do all this stuff and have the engineers come back and say, hey, y'all screwed up, you should have asked for three tenths of a more of an acre. This is basically to make sure that we can in fact get twenty-four units on this parcel because of the topography issues and parking.
So what would make the, make it work would be if we allowed them to put twenty-four units of apartments there, limited to that, cause we all, they all will have to bring the subdivision plan back, so.
All right, Mr. Gillie?
I would stick with the two buildings with twenty-four units or, you know, no more than three buildings with eight units. If you, in deference to what Mr. Dyer's saying, you're opening yourselves up to a lot of interpretation. From a staff's perspective, we're, we see a total number of units in, you know, the number of buildings. And if, I, I think we've worked with the neighbors substantially to get everyone okay with, this is the plan kind of that we're going with. Now, I don't want to say it's gonna be two with twelve. I'd rather at least, that gives them the up and down massing of some of it with topography. I'm just, I'm afraid of adding additional buildings.[1619.45]